All right, we're going to call to order the regular business meeting for Tuesday, June 14th. Meeting participation information pursuant to council rules proceeding. We're going to be a hybrid here for those in the in the room here and then also for a couple of council members, I believe, that are attending online. We call the roll call.
Thank you. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Gamble, and Scarborough. For the record, council members Hanford and Fisher are attending remotely.
Right, and pledge allegiance tonight's council member Davis. All right, so first item on the agenda tonight is under announcements and presentations. And I'm going to kind of have a pre, obviously, the mayor's not here tonight. He's a little bit under the weather, so you get to deal with me. There's the first announcement. All right, the next one up, we have a proclamation, Juneteenth from the mayor, and I'm going to read this into the record. So recognizing June 19th, 2022 is Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth, which is celebrated on June 19th and dates to the late 1860s, following the emancipation proclamation of 1863, is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of the enslavement of black and African Americans in the United States of America. And whereas Juneteenth is a day to remember a time when the United States began to formally expand the promise of life, liberty, justice, and freedom to include black and African Americans. And whereas Juneteenth is a day to celebrate innumerable contributions that black and African Americans have made to enrich the lives of every American, to acknowledge and express thankfulness for these contributions and to recognize how black and African Americans continue to make America a better place and to make us a better people. And whereas Juneteenth is a day for each of us to recognize and take authentic actions to reform policies, practices, and cultural norms that harm and discriminate against black and African Americans, especially within our cultural and our financial, legal, justice, and political systems. Whereas the Monroe Equity Council will host Monroe's Third Annual Juneteenth Celebration at Sky River Park on Saturday, June 18th, 2022, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And whereas Imagine Monroe aspires that our community is, we will be a safe place where everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the City of Monroe, Washington, do hereby recognize June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth. And I invite residents to participate in our community's Juneteenth Celebration, and I call upon everyone to listen to the voices of black and African Americans, acknowledge the injustices that have injured and continue to injure black and African Americans, both today and within our nation's history, condemn and confront prejudice, bigotry, and violence against black and African Americans, eliminate prejudice wherever it exists, promote unity and diversity, and love our neighbors by working to and realize liberty and justice for all people. Thank you very much. We have a couple of copies of this that we're giving around. We're just reading into the record. Roger that. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This time is set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter subject to a public hearing. Three minutes will be allowed per speaker. If you're attending virtually, use the link or number provided above. Please indicate that you would like to speak by clapping the raised hand. And the mayor, myself, will call on the attendees to speak at the appropriate time. If you're joining by phone, dial nine to raise your hand. Do we have anybody in queue or in the audience that would like? Okay. Start in here and then we'll go online. Does that work? We do.
Waiting.
Wait for the red and then just get your name and then I'll give you three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janelle Lewis. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am grateful. I would like to thank Mayor Thomas for your Juneteenth proclamation and the words written there. As an African American member of this community, I listened to your Imagine Monroe speech. And while yes, it would be amazing if everyone felt like they belonged, that is unfortunately not the case for me and other African American families in Monroe. I've been described lately as being racially charged or making everything about race. Let me say this, it will always be about race until it's not about race. To be completely honest with you, I don't want to repeatedly talk about rights my family should have and how my children are treated. Who wants to continually fight for what our children recite every morning in their classrooms, liberty and justice for all? It is draining. I don't find it offensive being labeled as a racially charged person because I'm continually reminded how uncharged some people are and the dire need to bring certain things to light. Monroe is home for my family. Can we move? Yes. Will we move? No. I was always taught you don't run from your problems. You stand up to them. I feel God brought my family here for a reason. And to be honest, I've met some pretty amazing people while living here. But that doesn't mean the work towards racial equity, equality, and justice stops for me. I want to ask every person under the sound of my voice this one question. Would you be okay with being treated the way African Americans are treated in our society? Better yet, this community. It is time for us as a community to get comfortable with having these uncomfortable conversations and truly work towards everyone feeling like they belong and they're safe. Over the weekend, I had the pleasure of speaking at the kickoff to Juneteenth event put on by Change the Narrative, City of Marysville and the Marysville School District. To see the partnership right there blew me away. City officials such as the mayor, chief of police, and the city director of human resources all stood up and spoke out about the racial incidents happening in their community and at their schools. They were very forthcoming in the work they need to do while also acknowledging the traumatic events that have taken place in their community. That is where the work begins, acknowledging where we are and collectively working towards where we need to be, no matter how uncomfortable that may become. One thing that was evident at this event was the solidarity they had amongst the city, the school district, and Change the Narrative. I do want to thank Chief Jolly and Officer Lether personally. It is undeniable the strained relationship that African Americans, especially our young men, have with the police. I stand here today to say here in Monroe, that's not the case for my family. I can't even say that for my hometown where I come, where I'm from. In all my 40 years of living in Merced, California, the police force there never made an effort to engage with the black community. Officer Lether, in my opinion, deserves a Medal of Honor, for real. Our family had a traumatic incident involving our two-year-old son, and he made it a priority to let Jordan know that he was there to protect him. My seven-year-old son got a surprise visit from Officer Lether on his birthday, and it truly made his day. Just the simple conversation. It is things like that which keep us here in this community and strengthen the relationship we have with the police department. My family supports the city of Monroe. We are here to stay and to also work through the not-so-good moments. Our world is full of problems, and no matter where you live, they will arise. But the Lewis family is very grateful to be a part of this community because we know it could be way worse. This is why we are so committed to the work of becoming a community that puts action behind the words we speak. The words such as, whereas Juneteenth is a day of each of us to recognize and take authentic actions to reform policies, practices, and cultural norms that harm and discriminate against black and African Americans, especially within our culture and our cultural and our financial, legal, justice, and political systems. Listen, acknowledge, condemn, and confront, eliminate, promote, and most importantly, love. We must look into ourselves and ask, what am I doing? What action am I taking to make this world a better place for not just me, but for everyone? I wanted to leave you with these words from Pablo Vega that were featured in the book Courageous Conversations About Race. I am from a clash of color, from an idea of love modeled for others' perception. I see me as I am, but am hidden from others' views. I am who I am, but a living contradiction to my peers. I see life as a blessing, a gift granted to me. Why should my tent describe me? Why should my culture degrade me? Why should the ignorance of another conjure my presence? Too many times I've been disappointed by the looks, by the sneers and misconceptions of the people who don't get me, who don't understand why it hurts. I dream of a place of glory and freedom, of losing the weight of oppression on my back. I dream of the entitlement of people, of the opening of their eyes. I dream for acceptance and for the blessings of feeling special just once. One moment of glory for the true virtue in my life, for the glimmer of freedom and a rise in real pride. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple online too. And, oh, Lindsay. You want to come off camera and mute? You have three minutes.
Unfortunately, my camera is not the best right now, so hopefully my audio is coming through. But good evening, everyone. My name's Lindsay Gagnon, and I live at 13376 Prospect Ridge Road, southeast here in Monroe. I'm a proud member of the city's Human Services Advisory Board. And I'm just coming to speak to you tonight regarding support for our local one-stop shop and resource center, Take the Next Step. I'm sure many of you know the work of Take the Next Step, and in case you don't, please check out their website pretty easy, ttns.org. Again, ttns.org. They are Monroe's One-Stop Resource Center. With, they have quality case managers that have been living and working in the Monroe area for over a decade or more. They also do regular homeless outreach. They provide kids, teens, and family programming, so they are just so much more than a one-stop shop. You'll hear maybe others, other agencies touting themselves as such, but I just want you all to know, they just do not provide the level of care that Take the Next Step does. Take the Next Step will be fully certified as a family support center this year, which means they'll be held to higher standards for supporting families and individuals. And believe me, they're up for the challenge because they do this every day. I urge you to consider investing in them because they will in turn bring on just more economic investment in the future for Monroe's families. Other cities have done it. In my day job, I'm the executive director for Community Resource Centers with Volunteers of America, Western Washington. So I know a little bit about how places like Take the Next Step and just high-quality centers create impact. There have been studies that have shown the positive returns gained by investing in a family support center. Like mine, for every, for every $1 upwards of $4 in economic short-term and long-term benefits are brought back to the community, and Take the Next Step already does this. This is done through intentional work with people every day. They're not just a handout. They are helping people find stable paths to self-sufficiency, and that can take some time. And so they're always a place to turn in this community. So, so I just, I leave you with this. I just, I hope that the city will kind of raise more awareness of the amazing work that this agency does and will consider an investment for this agency so they can continue to do, do a good work. And with a city support, they can do so much more. So thank you for your time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next up, we have Melanie Lockhart. All right, I see you're on camera and off mute, so you have three minutes.
Thank you, city leaders, for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate your time. My name is Melanie Lockhart, and I'm the mother of three young children here in Monroe. I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you, Mayor Thomas and the city for recognizing Juneteenth and the proclamation read moments ago. The Juneteenth events here in Monroe the past two years have been incredibly powerful, beginning in 2020, following the horrific murder of George Floyd. We saw many in this community come together to march and then listen as local voices told their truths. Then last year, the Lewis family did an incredible job pulling history into their beautiful performances that brought tears to my eyes as we could truly celebrate what Juneteenth is. It was an honor just to have the community invited, and I am so looking forward to attending this year's Juneteenth event on Saturday. I hope to see some of you there as well. I know that I feel blessed to be part of Monroe and the progress that has been made in just the short time that my family has lived here. Yet still, we have work to do, so much work to do. I've been heavily involved in school district conversations in particular since my eldest started there a couple of years ago. Since then, I've listened to, as too many families, specifically black students, as they've bravely and yet heartbreakingly told their stories of continued experiences where they are targeted due to the color of their skin. Just last night, after years of words without action, the school board approved a summer training for administrators and teachers that I hope will be a big step in a positive direction as it pertains to race-driven incidents within the walls of our schools. But those schools are part of this city, and these injustices aren't limited to between those walls. Racism, prejudice, and bigotry are alive and well in Monroe. So again, I thank you for the Juneteenth proclamation, and I want to repeat Mayor Thomas's calls to action. Listen to voices of black and American and African Americans. Acknowledge the injustices that have injured and continue to injure black and African Americans, both today and within our nation's history. Condemn and confront prejudice, bigotry, and violence against black and African Americans. Eliminate prejudice wherever it exists, promote unity and diversity and love. Love our neighbors by working to and realizing liberty and justice for all people. I look forward to seeing how Monroe's city council members and staff step up and take action so that this proclamation and the beautiful Imagine Monroe vision are more than just words. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have anybody online or? All right. Is that Grayson? Has been promoted. There we go.
Hello.
Grayson Gomes?
Yes, correct.
All right, Grayson Gomes, you've got three minutes.
Awesome, thank you. So my name is Grayson Gomes, and I am representing the Board of Directors on behalf of the Monroe Equity Council. We appreciate the proclamation for Juneteenth from the city council, as well as the support from Mayor Thomas, Chief Jolly, and the city staff. And we also wanted to acknowledge and thank you for your support for Pride this last weekend. And as September approaches, we look forward for your support for the last MEC sponsored event of the year, which is the multicultural event. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody in the audience or any more online there, Ms. Wackoff? Are we clear? All right, going once. Twice. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Councilmember Scarborough.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Been moved by councilmember Scarborough and seconded by councilmember Davis to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Everybody online? Yep, okay, 7-0. New business. First item of business, 7-1, ordinance 0182022, 22, 2022 budget amendment, first reading, Ms. Hassert.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. What you have before you tonight is our annual first budget amendment. Most of this is to true-up beginning fund balances. And usually with the true-up of beginning fund balances, there are some opportunities that we can take advantage of. There has also been some action that council has taken up to this point throughout the year that we knew we would want to incorporate into the budget amendment. So that's all reflected here and within all the attachments. This item did go in front of the Finance Committee last night where we, or last month, where we discussed it in depth. The only change between tonight's version and what went to the Finance Committee is there is a contract position within Human Services that we are now recommending be transitioned into a full-time position. It does not change the appropriation need as we had already talked about increasing appropriations in that cost center, so that can be absorbed within that. So with that, Mr. Mayor Protem, I would like to turn this over as an opportunity if anybody on the Finance Committee would like to speak about this, and then if not, I am available for any questions.
Nothing there? I think we're good. Remember, who's the third member? Isn't it you? I'm looking at Ed. I think it's you, isn't it? Nothing. Okay. All right, I think we're good. Are there any questions from, from the council? Because there is a requested action. Councilmember Davis. Wait till that turns red. He's trying.
There we go. Okay. I don't have any questions, but I will move to accept as first reading, ordinance number 018/2022, an ordinance of the city of Monroe, Washington, amending the budget for fiscal year 2022 to account for new or decreased revenues and expenditures, providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
And for seconds.
Again, and for gotcha. It was loud. Councilman, it's been moved by councilmember Davis and loudly seconded by councilmember Hanford to adopt this first reading in ordinance number 01822. Any discussion on the motion? Anybody online? We good? All right, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Hassert.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda. 7.2, North 41 Annexation, setting a date for initial meeting to commence annexation. Ms. Bright?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. I'm here tonight to notify you that the city received an annexation petition for the North 41 area, which is about 42 acres just east of the Monroe Woodlands Annexation. Can we go to the next slide real quick? Thank you. And also to set the initial meeting to, from council with the petitioner. And we are suggesting that that be set for two weeks from tonight. So that we may discuss it.
All right. Questions? Councilmember Foulter.
I moved to, there we go. I moved to direct staff to set a date of June 28, 2022, for a meeting with the initiating parties of the North 41 Annexation in accordance with RCW 35A 14120 to evaluate the proposed annexation and determine whether to accept, reject, or modify the annexation boundary.
Give me a second.
All right, it's been moved by councilmember Foulter, seconded by councilmember Kenny. Any discussions on the motion? All right, nothing online. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, 7-0. Thank you. All right, councilmember reports. I'm going to go ahead and start online. So as I see you online, it is, Kyle, you're up first.
Hey, how's it going? Good evening, everybody. Not much to report. Went to the Pride event over the weekend, and it was great. Saw a couple other members down there, and it was, yeah, it was a really, a really neat thing to attend. So that's all I have.
All right, councilmember Hanford.
Nothing tonight. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Scarborough. Yeah.
We put the wreath on our memorial out at Lake Tye and had a good turnout. Kind of a rainy morning, but nice turnout, and it was a pleasure to be part of the ceremony.
Awesome. Councilmember Kenny.
I also was at the Lake Tye service or memorial wreath laying and headed up to VFW Cemetery for that event as well and attended the Pride Festival with councilmember Fisher on Sunday, and that was a really wonderful event. That's it. Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Foulter.
Same kind of thing for me. I was also at the wreath laying where councilmember Hanford did an excellent job. Thank you for speaking at that and representing us. Really well done. And also enjoyed the VFW up at the cemetery, so that was great honoring our fallen and remembering them. And nothing else to report. Thank you.
Awesome. Councilmember Davis.
So I also was at the wreath laying. I appreciate the, the folks that showed up, and it, it's meaningful and it's important, and I think the crowd that turned out was, was great, and it was good to see that many people. And as many of my colleagues were that were there also, I thank them for, for coming out. Just to say that as, as a veteran and the son of a veteran and having lived most of my life as a, in the Navy and then serving in the Army, I've got a lot of experiences. And something like Memorial Day is very important to me. When I see people turn out and recognize that, then I feel good about that, and I thank you all for doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Davis. Well, I was not able to attend, but I, I, I heard it was a really good event, and I appreciate everybody was able to make it out. I was on the east side of the mountains enjoying the weekend for all the sacrifices that those that made us being able to do that. I did, however, later that week on the second, was able to attend so that it was the graduation awards night up at the high school. And so we presented, you know, through the foundation and then local businesses scholarships. And I tell you, if you ever want something to get jacked up about this community, attend that event. It's every year up at the high school. And just seeing the youth that's being produced out of this valley is just extremely impressive. It's extremely impressive how much the city comes together and rallies around these students. You know, through this little foundation, there was over $107,000 given out in scholarships this last year, just on June 2nd, which is phenomenal. It's just a great effort, and there's so many, probably the most heartwarming stories where a lot of the scholarships were, there were some memorial scholarships. So students that had graduated or teachers or people that were affiliated that had passed on and now have a foundation of some sort, and they continually recognize every year a graduate from, from Monroe High School. So it was just, it was a great event. Man, there's a lot of good kids that are graduating, you know, out of there, and we got a lot more. And I think I told you when I read the, the their applications, I was just blown away, blown away by the applications, but then they get to see everybody in person and have that. It was, it was just a great event. So I thank you. I know some probably contributed. Anybody that contributed to the auction, you definitely contributed because that's where a lot of our, our revenue sources from, from the Public Schools Foundation is from that auction. So it is greatly appreciated, and it was just, it was a great day. So that is it. All right, we made it down. We're on to staff department reports.
Yeah, sure.
Something I forgot to acknowledge is I attended Leaders in Learning
Oh, yeah.
Graduation, and Friday night had a granddaughter graduating in her junior year. And she walked and graduated Saturday at the arena as well. So I attended both of those and first time in about, never mind, I can't remember. Never mind. I can't remember. My other granddaughter graduated probably ten years ago, so about ten years since I've done it, but very good in that. And the big graduation in Everett was quite moving as well.
Yeah, I would. I'm glad you brought it up, the graduation, because it's the first time we've had a normal graduation. In town since the onset of the pandemic. It was. For those of us parents that had kids in twenty twenty, it was very, there was a little bit of PTSD, be honest with you, because there's all this stuff that. We missed out on that our kids missed out on, but at the same time, there was just, it was so cool to see us back. You know, back doing the trip to the elementary school where the kids grew up and they're high fiving the kids and just the whole fault or all that goes with it. It's an, you know, important rite of passage. The cool thing to see and I, thanks to the Monroe Police Department as well, something that has come of the pandemic is the parade. That never existed before. And it just, it's just a really cool thing that's been added on and I just appreciate what the city does and, you know, the support on what the police department does. I can tell you. As a father of a graduate from twenty twenty and then for, you know, I know all of the kids from twenty twenty to twenty twenty five, I think. But the last two years, it's just been the highlight. One of the highlights of the whole process has been that parade. So greatly appreciate it. One thing I did want to point out, though, if you ever thought our kids weren't resilient, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. One of the scholarships that's given out is from the class of twenty twenty. They took all the proceeds from the class party, all the stuff they raised and stuff that didn't happen. And they put it into the foundation to give out a five hundred dollar scholarship every year. Until it's out, until the money's out. So it's just pretty cool all the way around. So anyway, thank you for bringing that up. Yep. All right. Now staff and department reports. So first up, Parks Department.
Thank you. So, so as as previously mentioned, there's been a lot of events going on lately and. And so specifically, I'd like just to recognize the group that was involved. You'll notice all the flowers came back in the planter strips and the hanging baskets, and that was the work of several organizations. Including Mulback's Nursery, Downtown Monroe Association, Lowe's, Monroe Garden Club, Monroe Reformatory, Pine Creek Nursery, and Republic Services. And so all these groups came together to provide what everybody's seeing on Main Street and in the hanging baskets down there. So. It was just a huge effort by a bunch of people and just a lot of gratitude towards towards those groups. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Swanson? All right. Economic Development, Mr. Hubner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protam. Good evening to you, sir. Good evening, councilmembers. Your economic development report for May twenty twenty two is in your agenda packets. Just a couple of highlights for you. The Economic Development Advisory Board had two meetings scheduled in May. One was canceled due to a lack of quorum. The May twenty sixth meeting, the board received an update from our planning department about some possible code amendments in the downtown commercial zone. And express support for those should they be presented to you for your consideration later this year after working their way through the planning commission. Quick addition to that section, the Economic Development Advisory Board. Received a presentation from our lodging needs assessment consultant at their meeting last week and that. The information from that report will be presented to you all in your study session next week. So quick heads up that that is coming. Our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on June first to review second round applications. They approved reallocation of two awards from the first round and prepared. Recommendations from the second round applications totaling sixty eight thousand five hundred. And those will be on your consent agenda on June twenty eighth. The farmer's market is up and going and there's some some data in the in the report in your packet on how that's going so far, but suffice it to say, really good so far. Got off to a great start this year. And a couple last things, the American Rescue Plan Act, we've had three review committee. Meetings to review those applications and those recommendations will be presented to you in new business on June twenty eighth. There are twenty five projects that have been recommended with a total combined recommendation, recommended allocation of a little over one point three million dollars. So looking forward to your review of that in two weeks from from tonight. And then just a quick update, the gateway signage installation as we talked about at our last meeting, that process is completed. And as you all have, I'm sure heard as well, the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive on on those signs. So those two signs were phase one of that process and our colleagues in engineering are moving into phase two. Which is forty four wayfinding signs that will be in the proximity of Main Street, Lewis Street, and Frylands Boulevard. And in your packet is the location plan for those signs and some examples of what they will look like as they start going in. Mr. Mayor Protam, that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
All right. We have a question. Councilmember Kenny.
Thank you very much for all of that good news. I did have a question in looking through the new signage that is going to follow the the main signs. I noticed that there was a artist rendition of historic downtown area signs with some wrought iron. Is that part of the installation?
Oh, it is. So as I mentioned, there's a map in the in the packet with the locations of where those would go. Thank you for bringing that up, councilmember. That's an opportunity to mention that those those signs and the design specifically for the historic downtown. Was actually something that our our consultant heard the feedback from our our EDAB members and our local business owners. And actually came to us and said, hey, we had this, what we think is a great idea and we wanted to propose it to you. So that was a great piece of initiative on their part and I don't know if all of them are in that first phase, but there are several in the in the downtown area that will be included in in phase two. Which depending on weather, there's the big caveat, city engineer Peterson is expecting those to be completed later this summer.
That is great. Where will they be located?
Oh, I don't have specific locations, but they are, they're in the proximity of Main Street, Lewis Street, and Frylands Boulevard. And there will be signs primarily in along the along the sidewalks in the city right of way directing to points of interest. And the ones you mentioned primarily with the wrought iron.
Right.
Those are at the the entrances of both ends of the historic downtown.
Okay, so near the railroad tracks.
Near the railroad tracks and then on the west end. It's right around, right around the location of a locally owned coffee shop that you are all probably very familiar with.
Love that. Very nice. Thank you so much. Very exciting.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hubner? Okay, next up, Public Works Department, Mr. Landy. Now it's good. Now you got it.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Protam, council. I'd like to start with the report on the windstorm we had a few weeks ago back on May eighteenth. You may recall, we had a unexpected windstorm come through. We experienced several power outages, but also a series of. Fallen trees and streets and sidewalks and our crew responded to those about midday and worked in through the evening, taking care of those trees. We got a lot of positive comments from the community on that, on our quick and effective response on. So we wanted to highlight that. A couple wastewater treatment plant items, our CIP one project, our PHF control project is moving along. Overall, it's been a very successful project. It has been delayed with some supply chain issues, but. We are expecting completion in August and we're gonna be doing some testing of those systems in July. And so overall, we're anxious to get that project done. I'm very pleased with its progress. And the engineering report for the wastewater treatment plant, a draft copy was issued to the Department of Ecology a couple weeks ago. We did receive the draft comments from Ecology. Kennedy Jinx is working on those and I hope. The response to those comments, we can issue a final draft in the next couple of weeks, hopefully before the end of the month, and then. We should have a final version of that document by July or so. So anyway, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yeah, that was gonna be my comment. I mean, I think it actually came up in our meeting. You know, just the response and how good it was. So it was cool to see it in the report.
Yeah, the crew worked through their brakes. They just did an excellent job to prioritize and get that done.
If you wouldn't mind reading into the records, what's on the audio, the crew, I've got them in front of me, but I don't want to screw up last names. It looks like, I'll try here. Here we go. The storm response crew is Jesse Hackman.
Yes.
Jonathan Person.
Personius.
Personius, Jake Twyson, and Jason Beal. Well done. All right. Great job. Perfect. Thank you very much. Next up is nine point four human services work, April and May twenty twenty two. Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and council. So just a couple of highlights, the Community Human Service Advisory Board. Received presentations over the last couple of months from Joe Nigle with our community coalition. Several of you know Joe and his work. Inga Page with our local St. Vincent de Paul resource and then Jane Pack and Adam Wicks. Arshnak, I believe is the way that's pronounced, with Snohomish County Legal Services. We also received an update from Eric Britt, who is the director of the Evergreen Recovery Center here in Monroe. That's located just across the street from Evergreen Hospital. And the recovery center received about sixty six thousand dollars in ARP funding from the city. And they've been using that for scholarships for recovery beds. And already, just since they received that funding, I think it was around March or April of this year, they've been able to treat three different clients. One of which has successfully completed the program. So that's really good news. It is a resource that wasn't previously available and has really been helping the community extensively. So that was great to hear from Mr. Britt. And then the last item that I have is just to share with you that the board has also been discussing the council's draft strategic plan and priorities. They have some recommendations that they would like to share with the council. Their plan to come to a joint meeting at next Tuesday, and so we'll be talking about that work plan. The work that they've been doing and then the recommendations that they have for your strategic plan and strategic priorities. So looking forward to that conversation next week. And that's it for this month's report.
All right. Awesome. Any questions for Ms. Knight? Okay. Next up, mayor and administrative reports, city administrator report, Ms. Knight.
Doing the extended agenda first, if that's all right with you.
That's good.
Perfect. All right. Next Tuesday, then the twenty first, we will be having a city council finance and human services committee meeting. Receiving a presentation from Ben Worthen on nonrepresented benefits. This is a continued discussion with the committee. And then the fee resolution update from Becky Hassert. On the study session, then I mentioned the joint meeting with the Community Human Services Advisory Board. Mr. Heebner previously mentioned that HVS, our consultants, will be presenting the outcomes of our lodging. Needs assessment. So that'll be good. There are some really interesting information in that report around. What type of lodging we currently have and what type of lodging we could look forward to attracting into the city of Monroe. So that'll be a great discussion. And then the twenty nineteen Stormwater Management Manual with Megan Darrow. So those are the items scheduled for that meeting. It's a study session, but there are a few items. So. Yep, we'll be having a full full agenda. Looking forward then to June twenty eighth, we will be having a P three committee meeting. Talking about the draft capital facilities plan and then an update on the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan update from our community development director Lance Bailey. For the regular business meeting, it is again a crowded agenda. If you take a look, we have several announcements and presentations. And a presentation from Snohomish County Comprehensive Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan. This plan, like our comprehensive plan, gets updated on a regular cycle. And so this is just that regular cycle. The city council is asked to adopt that plan. So you'll be getting a presentation on it that evening. And consent agenda items, the adopted adopting the ordinance for the twenty twenty two budget amendment that was presented to you this evening. A public hearing on the interim unified development regulation definitions. And then final action on the resolution for the Connor Annexation. So a lot of media items really early on in the agenda before we get to new business. Which includes potential LTAC appointments. A resolution for an interlocal agency agreement and purchase and sale agreement for the venture property. This property is being purchased with grant funding from Snohomish County Conservation Futures Funds. So we'll be bringing that back to you for action and ordinance for first reading amending chapter fourteen, the flood hazardous area regulations. And then an update to the city's FMLA and PFMLA, so Family Medical Leave Act and. The paid family medical leave policy from Mr. Worthen. An ordinance to amend the municipal code for the Stormwater Management Manual and then finally a resolution to name North Hill Park. So again, a lot of items upcoming on the next couple agendas. And that's it for me for the extended agenda.
All right. Is there anybody that needs to call out anything on the extended agenda? And it's wise. Okay, great. Then we will move on to the administrators report.
All right. Thank you. I need the slide for a. To remember everything I was supposed to report on. We do wanna recognize, speaking of the good works that our Public Works Department staff members are doing. That the city did receive the twenty twenty one wastewater treatment plant outstanding performance award. And that twelve seventeen is to indicate that we have received that award twelve out of the last seventeen years. And that's remarkable. We are just one of a hundred and twenty four out of three hundred plants statewide that received that award. So I did list our own John Landy here in the room with us today, along with the other members of the wastewater treatment plant staff, which include Donovan Shepherd, Jose. Guaduello, what? Thank you. I'll let it go. Teresa Davis, Trevor Hankinson, Tyler Long Scott, and then Zach Bowman. So. Those are the members of that team that were able to help us achieve that award. So, yeah, I agree. It's awesome. I had mentioned when I was. With the council in May that the Association of Washington City's annual conference is scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty first through. The twenty fourth, there is a regular business meeting. And if anybody is planning to attend that, we would want to. List you as a voting delegate in order to represent the city at that conference. So if you are planning to attend or would like to attend. You can either see me or Clerk Wykoff after the meeting and we can connect you up with the resources to attend those meetings.
And that just for clarification, that's in Vancouver?
Vancouver this year. Correct. Yep, in Vancouver. We did have the county council member Sam Low host the District Five Recovery Roadshow. Last Thursday, they did note that it was the rainiest, I think, Thursday. In the history of Washington State on that day in June. So that was, we had a good turnout, though. There were about sixty people that attended. That road show and the county today just sent out a kind of a brief listing of the priorities that were identified at that meeting. And those included, and these will come as no surprise because we've been working on all of these issues together for the last several years. Behavioral health and mental health services, particularly youth and the mobile mental. Response for mental health and then increasing affordable housing. With accessory dwelling units, multifamily tiny homes and zoning changes being listed. And then increasing homeless shelter availability. That includes housing with wraparound services. So of the sixty people that were present at that evening, the those items received the majority of votes and interest. For funding through Snohomish County's ARP program. So just wanted to report out to council. We did talk earlier about the gateways being installed and had a couple of pictures. And then just a reminder that city offices are closed on June twentieth and servants of Juneteenth. So there you go, some great pictures of that sign. I think one of the big surprises is that picture that's on the top left corner where it looks snow capped. I don't think we realized when we were looking at the flat pictures that that was going to be one of the outcomes, but the. The design team at Tangram just did a remarkable job at at kind of highlighting those snow capped mountains. So it's something of a of a surprise, a pleasant surprise. Yeah, yeah. You never know when you're looking at it in a flat picture, whether or not it's really gonna meet your expectations, but I think they really did meet. And exceed what we were planning. So thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Knight? Okay, next up is the mayor's report. Okay, next up is the mayor's report and we have the additions 21, 22, 23, but there also is a proclamation for Father's Day that I'm going to read into the record here. So recognizing June 19th, 2022 as Father's Day. Whereas Father's Day is dedicated to honor remarkable men who strive and sacrifice all year, inspire us to reach great heights and support us no matter the challenges we face or the path we choose. And whereas we celebrate the men who raise us, who love us unconditionally, who do whatever it takes to set us on the road to success and want nothing more than for us to lead happy, healthy lives. And whereas fathers are providers, community leaders and pillars of family. And through their example, they teach the future dreamers and doers the value of hard work, compassion, service and personal responsibility. And whereas fathers help provide guidance, love, generosity, persistence, discipline, patience, integrity, help build our core and help us understand right from wrong. And whereas we give thanks to fathers who support us, mentor us, act as role models, models who enrich our lives and shape our character. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the City of Monroe, Washington, do hereby recognize Sunday, June 19th, 2022 as Father's Day and proclaim Happy Father's Day to all those who have embraced the essential role of fatherhood and encourage Monroe's residents and businesses to honor and express love and gratitude for fathers everywhere. Thank you. Awesome. Next item on the agenda is executive session. 11-1 pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110. Subsection one, little I. And we're staying here, correct?
Can I go? I think we're going to try and go down onto the, into the chairs on the floor and then we'll be.
Correct. We're in the room, right? Okay, so we'll stay in the warrant room and this is, are we going to stick to 15 minutes? Are we going to go, do we need a full 15, Zach, or are we?
I believe so, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This is a one that will probably extend past 15, but I think 15 is a good starting point.
Okay, we'll start with 15. So we're going to go into executive session with a three minute lag time and 15 minutes will be back at 8, 8:15. All right, we're gathering here. We're waiting for Councilmember Hanford and yeah. There's Mr. Fisher. For Councilmember Hanford. Okay. There's Councilmember Fisher. All right. We are back in session. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, I'd like to add an amendment item. I'd like to make the motion to add the amendment item 7.3.
To new business. All right. Motion's been made to add an item to the agenda, 7.3. Scarborough second. Can we get the, the item that read into the record that is being added, Mr. Well?
Thank you, council. The, the item to be added would be a motion to waive the council rules of procedure to add an item to the agenda regarding the authorization to execute and negotiate a settlement in the Fisher litigation.
All right, been moved by Councilmember Davis and seconded by Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussions on waiving council rules of procedure motion? Kyle's got his hand raised. Do you have a question, Kyle?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Let the record show it passes 6-0 with Councilmember Hanford not in attendance. Just attended and I'm, Councilmember, I'm assuming you voted yay.
That's correct.
So it is 7-0. There we go. We got us all. Fantastic. All right, Councilmember Davis.
Like to add another agenda?
Not adding, just vote on the agenda item, just add it.
Okay. New agenda item.
There we go. That council or that city attorney law can read into the.
Thank you, council. The proposed form of motion for the council's consideration would be moved to authorize the city attorney to negotiate and authorize the mayor to execute on the city's behalf a settlement agreement in the Fisher litigation subject to the parameters recommended in executive session.
Well stated. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for making that motion. It's appreciated. Do I have a second? Scarborough seconds. So it's been, the motion's been made by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Scarborough. Any questions on the motion? Saying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. There are no further items on the agenda that I can see. Been moved by Councilmember Scarborough to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Kenny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions, 7-0. We are adjourned.
Have a great night.